Colleagues, welcome to our council meeting. Let's hope everything works smoothly with this yet another change in the technology that we're using. So apologies for absence, we've got apologies from councillor Ramsay, councillor Alban and councillor Pullinga. Do we have any declarations of interest in any item on the agenda, please? Councillor Thomas? 10G, and that's non pecuniary. Any other declarations of interest, please? Thank you. Well, I have some announcements. First of all, I should have said at the beginning of the meeting, I told you the technology was going to throw me. This meeting is being filmed and livestreamed to YouTube. So by your presence, you're deemed to have consented to be filmed and to use to the use of those images and sound recordings. And can I please request that when councillors and members of the public are speaking, not to disclose any personal information of an individual, as this might infringe the rights of that individual and breach data protection rules. This is a formal town council meeting and members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak during the public open sessions, but will not be permitted to speak at other times. Thank you. So town mayor's announcements. On September the 29th, I was invited to attend an open day at Mantles Court, the new care home in London Road. Also present were John Mantles, Ward councillors, a senior CBC officer from adult social care, and the chairman and chief executive of Quantum Care. We met the manager of the home and her team and were shown around the facilities. The home will cater for 76 people and is divided into five residential areas, each with a sitting room and dining room with kitchenette. The bedrooms all have en suite wet rooms. The home is expecting 12 residents to transfer from Abbotsbury and is arranging for them to be all together in one of the five areas so that they still have their community. The facilities are first class with lots of outdoor space on balconies as well as in the extensive garden. And then on the 7th of October, the Queen's Green Canopy is a unique tree planting initiative created to mark Her Majesty's Platinum Jubilee. It invites people from across the UK to plant a tree for the Jubilee. On the 7th of October, I was invited to the launch of the local campaign for central Bedfordshire, which was held appropriately at Jubilee Wood. That wood was planted to mark the Queen's Diamond Jubilee and it will now be extended. The first tree was planted by Her Majesty's Lord Lieutenant for Bedfordshire Helen Nellis. Richard Wenham, leader of Central Bedfordshire Council, and Deputy Mayor Grant Fage and I planted trees on behalf of our respective councils. And thank you councillor Fage for doing the actual spade work while I looked on. Also present were Deputy Lieutenant Rod Calvert, who is coordinating the initiative for Bedfordshire, and councillor Steve Dixon, the CBC lead for sustainability. So at least something beginning to happen, a bit more like normality. Okay, I'm now on to the public open session. Does a member of the public wish to say anything? No, thank you. So I'm delighted that we have an invited speaker, PC Stephen Beer, a member of the community cohesion team. So Stephen, would you like to come and talk to us, please?
Okay. Hi, everyone. As suggested, my name is PC Stephen Beer from Bedfordshire Police. I work out of a team called the Community Cohesion Team. Essentially, what that means is, is that we are the kind of the front facing, the smiling, happy police officers who like to go to kind of events and be a positive face, a positive aspect of the force. Realistically, when people phone the police, it tends to be on the worst day of their lives. So when we go out, it tends to be to events, things that are highly publicised. And we kind of, you know, we take photos with the children or we take questions from members of the community and we offer that reassurance. What we also do is that we monitor tensions in the community. So if a particular high, highly publicised incident has occurred, we get involved and we work to reduce the tensions by being a force of communication within the community. To give an example of this, those of you who have heard about the incident that happened on the A5 fairly recently, we would have been very involved with members of the communities who would have been impacted by that in order to dispel any myths that would have arisen from it. There were some questions regarding the identity of those involved. That was being spread all over social media and with our contacts, we were going out and about and sort of dispelling myths and making people feel a bit more ease about what, as awful as what happened was, but making people feel a bit more relaxed essentially. We also do a lot of work when it comes to aspects of the policing job where we like to involve the public. So we do panels, so we do the use of force panel and we also do the stop and search scrutiny panel. Basically, what that means is we are aware that the way in which our job operates, we sometimes have to do things that makes the public very uncomfortable, particularly when they've done something wrong. And when that happens, it's good to get feedback about the level of which our response is. And we, as Bedfordshire Police, we're one of the first policing organisations in the country that has opened up that dialogue for members of the public to essentially be, there are reviewers. Because at the end of the day, we're a public facing organisation, so it's very important that we are working to the standards by which you are saying out to us. So your feedback is always very important and very crucial for us. But beyond that, as I say, my role is to go out and be that kind of friendly face. I recognise that across Bedfordshire Police, we've slightly neglected central Bedfordshire. And I say that looking at Luton and Bedford as kind of our, they don't like the word hotspots, but those are our hotspots. And when that happens, it unfortunately means that central gets neglected. But fortunately, I've come into the role with a focus on central Bedfordshire. So you are all within my remit and all within my area that I'll be looking after you going forward. Particularly when it comes to things like this, I want to be more involved in sort of like council meetings. I want to be involved in events. So I should be a face that you should see a lot more going forward. And again, I have business cards with me as well, so if there's anything you want to bring to my attention, I can be that person that you can, you can reach out to. I can steer you in the right directions if there's any issues. And we can hopefully build an open and shared dialogue between the force and also yourselves as well.
Thank you very much. It's good to hear and we've got two big events coming up in Biggleswade, as you're probably aware of, with Remembrance Sunday and also the lights switching on on the last Friday of November.
Yes.
And councillor Mike will be able to talk to you about that. And it's great to have a police officer here because I've been a town councillor long enough to remember when we did have a police officer who came once a month to all of our meetings. And there was a much greater understanding between the council and the police at that stage, although, excuse me, councillor Strohne does a good job as our police liaison officer. Are you happy to take questions?
Absolutely, yes.
Are there any questions for PC Beer? Councillor Fage?
Only really to council staff, I'm sure the PC Beer could have a full list of, whenever we have community events going on, not just run by the council, but we have somebody on the square, which I think is scheduled for some time in December and then probably again in the spring. And then we have carnivals, so we obviously have quite an important role to play in the community and making sure that our community is aware of events which are going on, even if they're not ones which are run by the town council. So hopefully we can keep that dialogue there. It would be great to keep some business cards as well to keep that dialogue open, if that's all right. One quick question then, I guess. So how much of your time, so are you across the whole of central Bedfordshire? Or is there, because it's quite a big space, so I dare say there might be one or two hotspots down just on the outskirts of the sort of volcanic epicentre that is Luton. And a slightly less hotspot there, so maybe Dunstable. But you know, if you could spend a bit of time here as well, you know, we'd be grateful for that, of course, because we're the biggest town in our part of Bedfordshire, for sure.
Of course. I, like I say, I do cover all of central Bedfordshire, so I'm fully expecting I'll be pulled from pillar to post. But the fortunate thing about the position I've entered into is that the busier I get, the more I can justify hiring more members of staff under my team. So make me busy and they will, and there'll be more people to justify coming along and joining my team.
I'm sure we'll be very grateful to help you doing that. Councillor Knight?
Good to use the button again. Thank you for coming. Really looking forward to seeing you at some of our events. And I think it's a really important initiative and a great opportunity to meet with members of the community on a happy occasion, as you suggest. This may not be within your remit, so I apologise. We do have a police office. I'm not sure it's accurate to call it a police station in Biggleswade. One thing I notice when I go past is that there's a notice board outside that looks a little bit sad. If I'm honest, it's completely empty. It's been empty for a long time. And I don't know whether that would be an opportunity to put something in there to showcase some of the police work, some of the campaigns and some positive messaging as opposed to a very sort of empty, lost looking notice board.
As you said, that's not necessarily within my remit, but that does sound like an excellent idea. So what I can do is I can take the information down regarding that. I will make it my mission to go and view the board, see how sad it is. And then we'll work from there to make it a bit more lively. Because the life of a community is knowing what things are going on, particularly when it comes to the people who are out there making sure that people are safe and happy. So we can definitely work on something.
Councillor Strohne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome. See you here. As far as the community cohesion team is concerned, how much liaising do you have with the policing team for the, this area of Bedfordshire led by Inspector Bates? Because communications with police are improving greatly as well. Great to see you here, coming to the wild parts of the east of Bedfordshire. But it'd be interesting to know how you work with the team that actually polices the area. Because obviously with the cohesion element, policing events and things, there is an overlap between the two of you.
Of course, yeah. So I, my sergeant is a chap by the name of Karinjit Sangera or Vic, as he likes to be called. He is, like I say, is my sergeant. We work under essentially the community banner of policing. We are in a very fortunate position in my, in the office of Luton that I work out of, in that we work kind of with every policing team. So we have an officer who is dedicated towards Luton and he works with all the Luton officers. We have an officer who works for Bedford, who does the same. And me being in central, I essentially have active communication with all the central kind of offices and teams, whether that's response or community, PCSOs, specials. And I, and even though I'm just a PC, I get the honour of bossing them around on occasion, which is very fun. So yeah, I do, I do liaise with all the inspectors who are related to central, which I'm very fortunate to do.
Anything else from anybody? No. Well, thank you very much for coming.
My pleasure.
I hope you'll stay and listen to how our meeting is run and we look forward to seeing you a bit more often. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So do I have any members' questions, please? Councillor Knight?
Thank you. Just wondering in relation to the neighbourhood plan consultation, how that consultation is going and whether we're getting a good response from the community or whether we need to do any additional advertising or promotion to make sure we get really good engagement there, please?
I think it's fair to say it's a bit slow at the moment, but the leaflets are still being delivered around the town. Staff have been looking at the issues today and are seeing what else we can do. An awful lot has been done. I don't know whether you want to say anything, Mr Clark?
I think Corinne would like to say a few words. We picked up our management team this morning and we were looking to try and look at... Just follow my own advice. In regard to potentially just trying to reawaken and trying to get a better, better response than we've currently got going. But do you want to just mention some of the topics that we talked about this morning as options that we were going to put to members?
Thank you. Thank you, Town Clerk. Yes, we're improving. We're midway through the leaflet dropping exercise at the moment, which completes on Friday, this Friday. That's a few words at the moment and we're monitoring the situation closely.
The people who have dropped into the Orchard Centre today have been quite positive about what we're doing and talked sensibly and brought up issues that aren't necessarily directly to do with the neighbourhood plan, but I've made notes of which we can address in other ways. I think it's a shame that we couldn't get the leaflets delivered last week rather than this week. But I think they started going out on Friday, Saturday. So I think when people see that, because the people who came today had come because they'd, they'd got the leaflet through the door, that seems to have been the most successful thing, in spite of the posters and banners and everything else that we've done. So we'll see where we go, but it's been a positive reaction so far. People understand what we're trying to do with the neighbourhood plan and are with us on that so far. So we just need that to spread a bit wider.
Yeah. Could I add something to what Corinne was saying? So we certainly, I think, could do some more on social media and that's one of the options that we're looking at. We're certainly, again, reaching out to all of the third sector that exists within our surrounding area just to remind them about what's going on so that they can reach out to their contacts. We're also looking at any possible press elements that we can add to what we've already done. Yeah. So, you know, there's a commitment here to get as much response as we possibly can and to liven the debate.
Any other questions? Councillor Fage?
Yes. So at the last meeting, we, I think I raised as a matter arising about the response to Land North. So obviously the Land North planning application has gone in, there was a consultation. We provided a very detailed response as a council alongside our transport audit of the applicant's transport assessment. And Sandy Town Council had a response as well. I appreciate, I've seen the emails. I know we've emailed and I know we've asked for them to go on the planning portal. But as of quarter to five today, they still weren't on the planning portal. And this is, this is not a criticism of our town council staff, because I've seen that they followed up on the wishes of members. But clearly somewhere, someone is either reluctant to put our responses online or is a little bit too busy to do so. So I was hoping if we could find a way of following up on this that perhaps escalates a little bit. So I appreciate we have two central beds councillors who are also town councillors. Perhaps if they have a bit of time to raise with the planning officer, that we would like all three of those things put on the planning portal so that it's fully transparent about what our position is at the council and so that other officers in other parts of the council who will be opining over some of the detail can see what our position is. If that doesn't work, then I think we probably need to escalate higher up the chain as well, perhaps to the head of planning or whoever. But it's getting a little bit silly now because it was several weeks ago that we asked for that.
Thank you. Councillor Bond?
I'm happy to follow us up with the portfolio holder and also the actual planning officer.
Thank you very much for that. Any other questions? No. Okay, I'm moving on. We don't have the minutes of our last meeting for various reasons. The office has been very busy. So they will come forward to our next council meeting. What we do have are the minutes of the, or the draft minutes of the Public Land and Open Spaces Committee meeting to receive and note. Councillor Foster, would you like to say anything about these minutes?
I'm happy that the minutes are on your record.
Thank you very much. Anything anybody wants to say about the minutes or question? Councillor North?
Present at the meeting and a must.
Okay, thank you.
There is one small, one small correction I would just like to make to the minutes, if I may.
Yes.
Which is on page six, it's item... Item five, 5G, which is there are further nine play areas under consideration. Then it says adopt, the adopt should not be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I think I can move on. Sorry, Councillor Foster, the other one.
Just for my clarification, so, and I know we've covered this a number of times previously. So we've got the minutes of the PLOS meeting. These are draft minutes, so presumably we'll be dealing with the actual minutes of the PLOS committee. So the purpose of this meeting would be to note them or to make comments on them. I appreciate we have made comments this time. Would we expect to do that as a matter of routine or is this a...
I don't think we can revisit the PLOS meeting that they refer to. My understanding is that they're there for us to note and to ask any questions of clarification. Because with the committee's only meeting four times a year, it would be a long while otherwise before other councillors knew what had been discussed at PLOS, who aren't on the committee.
My clarification really is around amendments to them. So because we're going to be dealing with these at the next PLOS meeting as well. I think we've had this, this whole thing. I'm sure I've dealt with these minutes previously and then we do them at the next committee meeting. So it's a double, double whammy, if you like. So I prefer to deal with them once rather than deal with the corrections or anything twice.
Okay.
Sorry, may I, Madam Mayor? The purpose of bringing them to this meeting, one is that it is actually in the standing orders as an agenda item. And it's just in the appropriate place, but members will see from the agenda that it is to receive and note the minutes. The other reason why these minutes would come is if there was a recommendation to council that would then be brought forward for your consideration at that point and for you to either decide to accept the recommendation or otherwise.
Thank you for that. There aren't any recommendations from that set of minutes, but I think it's right that the chairman of the committee has, can say anything that they want to when the minutes are before council. Okay, so we don't have any matters arising because we don't have any council minutes. So we're on to the pre-planning consultation for the mast in Dunton Lane. Comments, please, colleagues? Councillor Fage?
I hate to sound like a broken record. I hate, sorry, Michael. Sorry, I hate to sound like a broken record, but we only have five entrance points to town. As I've said many times before, and I think the first impression that people have of our town is very important. Having a big mast, appreciating there are some rather large industrial warehouses and potentially a substation going nearby. But being so close to Stratton Moat and some quite important green spaces that we're trying to preserve in the neighbourhood plan, I'm not overly comfortable with this location. And I don't think it's a very welcome greeting to Biggleswade if you're coming in from the Dunton, from Dunton Way. So I don't have a specific proposal, but it looks like we're being asked to perhaps provide some comments prior to a planning application going in. But I would, I would really be quite keen to understand what other locations were considered, at the very least, and why they were ruled out over, over this one. We know from the mast that was being considered at Fersham Hall at one point, there were several locations that were being considered, eight, nine, 10 locations. I suspect that would have been the case for this mast as well and I'd like to know what those other ones look like. Rather than just being presented with what appears to be close to a fait accompli. But appreciated as a planning process to go through, but we'd really like some of that transparency so that we can influence this early on and have a good dialogue with the people who are looking, looking to put this mast in place.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Are we happy that we go back as our response to say that we're a bit concerned? Because it's one of the main entrances to town and we'd like to know what other locations have been considered. Is that okay with everybody? I'm getting nods around the table. Okay?
Sorry. Yeah, it's the location, the entrance point to town and its proximity to some quite important green spaces as well. So we'd like to see what other locations have been considered and to enter into a dialogue around what those were.
Okay, I'm making a note of that as well. Councillor Strohne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the sake of clarification, is councillor Fage objecting to citing this mast on this location? And if so, shouldn't we be objecting to the location rather than just saying what other sites have been considered? I'm not really sure. Just asking what other sites have been considered doesn't necessarily do anything. So I think councillor Fage is unhappy with the location, but is he happy that it's there? If they've used other sites, what is the intention behind the proposal other than the fact just to say, well, have you looked elsewhere? They say they have, but they haven't given us the details. So could councillor Fage just clarify whether we are object, what he wants us to object to the council? Or do we just want to raise the question?
Yeah. I think we probably need to establish the facts before we object. There will be a chance to object to the planning application. This is the first time we've seen this and I think we should probably enter into discussions in a spirit of goodwill if we can. Perhaps the wording I would use when going back on what we're being presented with here today is that, you know, we're very uncomfortable with this location and we'd be keen to see other sites. We would like to see other sites be explored prior to, rather than making a final decision. So I don't, I think it would be premature to object now, given we don't know what the other options might have been. And, you know, there is probably a reason why this mast needs to go in place. So we shouldn't just necessarily rule it out until we're, until we're in full possession of the facts, which I think we need to establish through our response.
Thank you. I've got councillor Knight and councillor Bond.
Thank you. So I'm broadly in support of the proposal from Grant. I would like to propose a small amendment, which is to be a little bit more positive and to welcome the proposed investment in 5G infrastructure in Biggleswade. Because I know our residents are often complaining about the performance of the cellular networks. So I think it would be helpful to prefix it that we welcome the investment, but we have concerns over this particular site and would like to make some more alternatives.
Thank you. Councillor Bond?
I think what we're going to realise here, this is a pre-planning application and it's not, it's not usual for us to be given, be part of it. So the actual agent is clearly wanting to, wanting our comments as positive feedback to come back and say, if we aren't happy to locate and to actually make this clear. So I mean, it was coming to, so literally all these things are normally confidential with the agent. Game fake clear, wants our opinion. So I think we should just nice to come back and say, we're in favour of the, as, in favour of this application. We would like some more consideration as to its possible location. But you know, we're, the facts are positive about it. That's what all the agents really want to know. So we, so we can actually, and maybe suggest that we're happy to engage with them on it.
Okay, so I think the response that we're coming up with is that we welcome the investment of the mast. We're uncomfortable with its location because of it's at the entrance to the town. There's the proximity to Stratton Moat. We'd like to enter into dialogue and we'd need to understand what other locations were possibly considered and why they were rejected. Is that a fair summary for everybody? Okay.
Sorry, just not necessarily whether we've rejected, just why this one took precedence over other ones, for example. Yeah, if we can, we can phrase it in the way that councillor Bond and councillor Knight have suggested because 5G is quite important there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think we know where we're going. Are you happy with that, Mr Clark?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, fine. So I'm going to move on to the traffic calming and waiting restrictions. And we've got two separate papers here. One is the waiting restrictions on the length of Potten Road because of the crossing for Edward Peak School. And the other is the speed cushions that are being proposed to be put either side of the crossing. Can I come to councillor Knight and councillor Foster, please?
Thank you. So first, along with many in the community, I'm disappointed by the time it's taken for the much needed zebra crossing to be installed on Potten Road. Families using Edward Peak School really do need a safe and permanent crossing. And I'm strongly in support of the proposed zebra crossing and associated waiting restrictions shown here tonight. However, I do not agree with the proposal to install speed cushions on Potten Road. As councillor Fage mentioned, Potten Road is one of only five access roads into, into Biggleswade. Speed cushions, slow emergency vehicles, they lead to vehicles braking and then accelerating in quick succession. And that causes noise. It can cause vibration for nearby residents. And of course, it increases exhaust pollution for nearby residents as well. Speed cushions also cause vehicles to drive nearer to the centre of the road, increasing the risk that vehicles passing may collide. So I would like to see the introduction of a 20 mile an hour speed limit, just as we already have on London Road. But I do not believe this needs mechanical obstructions on the highway such as speed bumps, chicanes or cushions. I would support a vehicle... I would support a vehicle activated speed warning sign. And I understood that was the agreement that we had with CBC officers previously having committed to delivering that signage. So I don't really understand what's changed. So I'd like to make a proposal. So I propose that we write requesting the urgent installation of the zebra crossing along with a 20 mile an hour speed limit, but strongly opposing the installation of speed cushions or other mechanical obstructions on the grounds of causing pollution, slowing emergency vehicles and creating a hazard for road users. Instead, I'd like to see the vehicle activated speed signs as previously agreed.
And are you including the 20 mile an hour speed limit?
Yes.
Yeah. Councillor Host, do you want to come in and then I'll come this side?
Well, I, I'd rather think that councillor Knight has pretty much said exactly what I wanted to say. I have the same concerns about the speed restrictions. Clearly there is some merit in having some restrictions down there, but I don't think the road is fast enough in that respect to require the type of mechanical thing measures that are proposed. Everything else that councillor Knight has proposed, I absolutely agree with. So I think we, I'm happy to sit.
So you're seconding the proposal?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Who else? Councillor Fage and then councillor Strong.
Yeah, completely agree. The only thing I missed from councillor Knight's proposal, did you, did you mention in the proposal itself about strongly supporting the waiting restrictions? Because I just, I just missed that from the final part. Yeah, because I think that needs to come in as well, because, you know, there are parts of this that we support and where we can be positive, we should be positive. However, there's one thing we should be less positive about and that's the speed cushions. So I'm not sure whether it's worth mentioning. It's probably not, but maybe a note for when this comes to traffic management committee. We, we're aware that, well, certainly I'm aware when I drive through villages, speed activated signs seem to be the go-to thing to slow down cars. Seems very counterintuitive. Why? Just because we're a town, we shouldn't have one of those and we should be getting around from total wipeout on our roads instead.
Thank you. councillor Strong.
My question was very much on the same basis as councillor Fage about, we've got reference to the no waiting at any time. And that was, seemed to be admitted from councillor Knight's proposal. So otherwise, everything else I agreed with, apart from the fact we seem to be just missing that point.
Thank you.
And you're happy with that? Yeah. Okay, so if I can try to summarise it. With first of all, saying that we strongly support the waiting restrictions. Or I should say, the first thing is to ask for urgent implementation of the, of the crossing. Strongly supporting the waiting restrictions. It is an access to Biggleswade. We don't want the speed cushions. The braking and, and then speeding up again or moving again causes pollution. It's a problem for emergency vehicles. We'd be very happy with a 20 mile an hour speed limit through there and a vehicle activated sign each side. Okay, all those in favour, please? I think that's unanimous. So thank you very much, colleagues. Right, the, the next item on the agenda is the planting scheme, a procurement. So we have, just now, I'm just trying to find the right paper. We have a paper from Mr Truppin. Do you want to introduce it, Mr Truppin?
Thank you very much, madam mayor. Essentially, I would say the paper speaks for itself. We are, or the council is hoping to obtain a much better, if that's possible, because it was really good this year, but an even better display at the entrance points to the, to the town and in the hanging baskets, bedding plants. And the public realm manager has been attempting to get quotes. He wants a particular type of species that will basically blend together and give a very good presentation of, of colour and, and design. And it is proving very difficult because of the nature of the plants that he wants to obtain to get competitive quotes. There's only really one supplier that can supply all of the plants to actually match together. Because if you're buying from more than one place, of course, that match is then lost. And he is asking for council to approve a suspension of standing orders. And I'm doing it on his behalf. Because the, the quotes, the quote that we've got is in excess of £3,000. And standing orders require, I'm sorry, financial regulations, I should say, require three competitive quotes under normal circumstances. So genuine competition is, is not available for the range of plants. And we are asking, please, for council to suspend the financial regulation to allow these plants to be ordered.
Thank you. I've got councillor Bond and councillor Knight. Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Bond.
Thank you for this, obviously. I'm curious, this first came here, £3,000, what's comparison to what we spent last year? Because I know we, I think maybe last few years we've used a, a different supplier.
Would you mind if I responded?
Yeah, go on.
As you can see, the report specifies that actually we spent £3,301 last year. We're proposing to spend £3,370 this year. The volume is significantly better as well as. So I think I just reiterate what the assistant clerk said. We're very lucky to have our new public realm manager whose displays were very, very well received by our residents this year. He has great aspiration for the new year as well. The, the problem that we have is that they are very, very specific types. And it's very difficult in COVID times to get that type of, of plant. So I'd like to support him as best that we can. He has tried his level best to get as many quotations as possible. And this has included the, the gentleman in our marketplace who also, also supplies plants normally. They're just very difficult to get. Thank you.
Councillor Knight.
Thank you. So I have a question and a point of possible pedantry. So the question is, is the proposed supplier the same supplier as last year or a different supplier? Because I would be more concerned if it was the same supplier, because we haven't, it's harder to benchmark. Less concerned if it's a different supplier.
Do you want me to respond?
Okay.
Yeah.
So last year, there were a number of suppliers who we used. This is one of a group of four or five suppliers that we used at the time.
Thank you. So my point of pedantry relates to the financial regulations. So I checked these before the meeting. So financial regulation 18.2, I won't read the whole thing. But the end of it essentially says we may suspend part of the financial regulations, provided that an assessment of the risks arising and has been drawn up and presented in advance to all members of the council. So I cannot see that assessment of risks here tonight.
Thank you. councillor Strong.
I'm concerned with that reference there to genuine competition is not available. I hear the difficulties that there are, but we've found one supplier obviously who can do it, was how local to that is us, how much, how wide we look for this, because I appreciate the urgency. And if we do suspend standing orders on this particular point this year, can we be assured that we will start looking now for potential suppliers in, in the future? It just strikes me in the whole country that there are no other suppliers. And we've, we've got a duty to make sure that we're getting the best value for the council. And it is quite specific, it says genuine competition. There may be no genuine competition, but it doesn't actually explain how that has been dealt with in, in this particular instance. It's, it's a difficult one, but I think we've, we've got, we've got to ask these questions.
councillor Thomas.
I mean, logically speaking, it says we paid £3,301 last year for 2,000 bedding plants, 66 bat skids. And this year we're getting more plants, 2,573. And it's costing roughly £70 more. So it seems like a good deal to me and it's, it looks like we're doing a wholesale buy from one place, which we're getting benefit of the discount. Bought a lot of stuff in my past across companies. It's always better to buy from one because you get a bit of a discount.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I think we've got to be, to be realistic. We all know what's going on in the big wide world at the moment. Everything is going up quickly. The building industry is facing meltdown. You know, people are struggling and in the horticultural and agricultural fields, they can't get the people. They can't get the people to pick the lettuces to get to the supermarkets. They can't get the people to do the planting that they need to give us the plants for next year. I mean, good technicalities have been raised, but I really do think, colleagues, that we need to just give the go-ahead for this in all the circumstances and, and let our public realm manager do what he wants to do, because he made a really good impact on the town this year. I'll come to the clerk in a minute, but councillor Fage.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a proposal then. So I think, I mean, we need to be careful that we're not making a habit of not getting three quotes. But like what, what you've just said from the chair. And in light of the, the figures from last year and the quality of display that was put on in such a short period of time. You know, the public ground manager only joined us, what, in the spring? And by the summer, we had, you know, fabulous floral, floral display. The fact that we're getting more for only a little bit more money seems like a pretty, you know, finger in the air. It sounds like a pretty good deal to me. It smells pretty good. So I'd like to propose that we, that we proceed with the recommendation as it's outlined in the paper.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Yes, thank you. Sorry, Mr Clark, you wanted to come back.
Only to say that I think whilst listening to the debate, the, the public realm manager has tried his hardest to get the quotations for the type of plants that we like. I know that our community benefits from this. I know how well received it was last year. We do not make a habit of suspending our financial regulations. I've been here for 14 months. I've yet to see, it just hardly ever happens. So I do not believe it's any issue of concern whatsoever. And I think we should support him. Thank you.
councillor Strong again.
If we're going to accept the recommendation, we also need to specify the reason why we're suspending standing orders. Of course, get resolution through. It's not just sufficient, in my view, to accept the recommendation. We've actually got to deal with the suspension of, of the regulations. So it needs to be two-part in that respect, because yes, it looks familiar compared to last year. I've got no doubt about that. But I think we just have to be very careful about how we frame it. Certainly, we've got, we've got to deal with the financial regulations. So we've covered that in addition to what's set out in the recommendation.
I think perhaps councillor Fage, your recommendation should include the paragraph that talks about which financial regulations, the one requiring three quotes, but the financial regulation 11.1.87 allows where genuine competition is not available because of the specialist nature of the goods, that the regulation 11.1.1 need not, or 1.1 need not apply. So are you happy to include that in your recommendation, please councillor Fage? So, so on the basis of what you've already said and that, all those in favour of approving the recommendation, please? I think that's unanimous again. Thank you very much. Thank you. Right. We're now on to planning applications. So the, oh, sorry, we're not, we've got a tree scheme, haven't we? Sorry, no, that's, it's me getting confused. We're on to planning applications. We're on 10A, 15 Cove approach. Single story rear extension. Any comments, colleagues? Subject to neighbours? Okay, thank you. 33 London Road, single story rear extension. Comments? Subject to neighbours again. Are we all happy? Yes. Presland Drive, ground floor back extension. Any comments, please? No, subject to neighbours again. 19 Chapelfield, single story front extension. Subject to neighbours, are we happy? Right. 151 London Road, first floor and loft side extension with a dormer and a rear single story extension. So quite a lot of work. Any comments, please? Councillor.
I objected this one because if we saw the memos, Kevin Archer objected based on parking, the number of rooms. And I also read further down in one of the memos, it talked about that withdrawn the application. But whether they have or not, I still object.
Okay, so you're objecting on the grounds of parking and what else was it, please?
It's the number of rooms. It's the memos that were attached to it, which from the council, Kevin Archer. He was objecting on the fact that it was being converted to five bedrooms. And therefore the parking would impact on the street.
Okay. Do I have a second for that objection, please? Yes, councillor North, thank you. Any more comments? So all those in favour of objecting for the grounds that we've talked about, please show. Okay, that's fine. That's a definite majority to object. Little variation or removal of conditions. Has anybody worked out what this is about? Because I haven't had a chance to look at it. Councillor Knight.
Yes, I have read this one. So this is essentially removing the condition that they'll have to have CCTV or automatic number plate recognition. And basically to revise it to wait to see if there are any problems. And if there are any problems reported by neighbours, they'd consider introducing control measures. This is around the access and whether there should be, what control mechanisms should be to prevent people exiting on, on, what's that? I can't remember the name of the road, but the road.
Sorry? Normandy Road?
Normandy Road, yes. So it's, the only change is essentially little saying they don't want to install CCTV or automatic number plate recognition unless someone else reports there's a problem to the council. Therefore, I propose no objection.
Thank you. Is everybody happy with that? So it's a default councillor Strong, sorry.
I do have some concerns, having heard councillor Knight's explanation. I think we should be, we've had no objection subject in particular to the observations of the police. Because there may be implications that the police would actually like taken on board in that. I'm not an expert in that respect and I appreciate that we don't sell CCTV or number plate recognition everywhere. But there may be very good reasons for that, because we've, there are difficulties on the retail part very nearby. Because of a lack of actual evidence that's available. I think we should, we should at least be putting that caveat on any, any no objection being subject to the observations of the police in terms of security generally.
Are you happy to add that? Okay, so we're not objecting, but subject to the observations of the police about security in the area. All those in favour? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're on to 17 Drove Road, loft conversion and first floor extension to the rear. Any comments? Subject to neighbours again. Okay, thank you. The lawns works to trees. We've got something from the tree officer here. Any comments on that? No, just note it. Are we happy with that? Thank you. So we're on to accounts. We don't have Mr Pullinger here. Councillor Thomas, I think this is you, isn't it?
It's councillor North.
Oh, is it councillor North? Sorry. Yes, we've changed committees and I've gone to the one. Sorry councillor Thomas, he looked at me as if he's got two heads. Councillor North.
Deputy. Read this now in my new eyesight. Well, I don't really have any comment on this. It all looks reasonably okay. It's obviously we're looking at this more closely in the coming months as we look at the budget for, for next year. And hopefully things will begin to stabilise now with the ending of all the special measures, et cetera, and return to normal. So, and hopefully completion of our staffing exercises. So I propose that we accept the four items mentioned as, as listed.
Thank you very much. Seconded for that? Yes? Yes, of course, go on.
Thank you. So I did have some concerns looking at this, over the scale of the debt is shown on the balance sheet. So I have raised that formally with the town clerk. And he's, he's looking into that and hopefully going to provide some more detail. But I have no reason to doubt his accuracy. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Strong.
Yes, an observation. I have in past commented about the lack of information on transaction detail. I welcome the vast improvement in the transaction details going through. Does raise queries on one or two issues about why the expenses are there. But at least we now know what the monies are being spent on. So I congratulate the clerk for having implemented this and hopefully it will continue very much on this basis.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your positive comments, councillor Strong. I just wanted to reiterate to members, obviously, that we had a good report on our finance review. We had Joshua, who's our new finance manager, start with this approximately a week ago. We have Wilma, who's our new head of finance, about to start on next Monday. They will be very, very busy in implementing the vast number of recommendations that members signed off. One of those, I would just want to reiterate to councillor Strong now, is I still think that this has a long, long way to go in regard to reporting for members, for me, a long, long way to go. So please bear with us while we implement that. And one of the things will be much more detailed reports and also a conversation with you, exactly what you wanted to see. So there's a lot more work to be done. So please bear with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we've got the proposal to accept the accounts before us. All those in favour, please? Thank you. That's unanimous again. Right, so we're on to items for information. We have a letter from Trinity Methodist Church thanking us for the grant. Are we happy to note that, colleagues? Yeah, okay, noted. Public open session. I think we have one member of the public online. I don't know whether he wishes to say anything. Do you wish to say something? Yes, please, Mr Reynolds.
I've already read the files of what are about to discuss. It's not tentative, it's possible. But it is unusual that it's affecting our resident town, the council, and not the people. My concern is the total lack of medical and dental facilities. We have two doctors, we have two dentists. Why would we accept energy institutions? So we might be that's pretty relevant. And for final questions, the council situation is a little dark in that there's shuttles. Now, I have to admit, that's possibly a bit, it must be back of people, people who are doctors and dentists now suddenly find their aid. On the other hand, we've built 1,300 new homes over on the east side of town. Probably a thousand ago, plus another 400 if the CBC gets their way. And I think that was partly increased our population of the town by about 4,500 people. I don't have any evidence to suggest that, but I think that won't be far wrong. Now, the main thing is, we've done all this development out of the east side of town. And as far as I'm aware, there's no dentists, no doctors. So where do they come to the town? So, Madam Chairman, probably about five or six years ago, there was some grandiose plan floated that we would have some superdual medical centre there. So, you know, you have to ask the questions, why? Why haven't central beds provided space? Because it's for a large number of residents. It's bad. I don't think we could, you know, government departments to sit on their hands and do nothing. I don't think doing nothing is an option. Because I'm telling you now, in 18 months' time, if you don't do something, the whole system will collapse. And it's our residents that are suffering, not CBC, it's our residents. So that's why I'm raising it. So I'd like to think the BTC would raise this issue with CBC on an urgent basis. And I said, what are you going to do? You're just going to let all this, I mean, we're talking about building another 400 homes. If anything should stop it, it's this issue. So my only suggestion is, we do have, you know, Orchard Road Community Centre. That's possibly available. We need to do something. So I'm really asking for support from everybody in this room. Because I think it's an issue we need to take up with central beds. Okay.
Thank you, Mr Reynolds. I can assure you that everybody around this table is as anxious as you are about the situation with GPs. Central Beds, my understanding now that they have finally negotiated with the NHS about the site of Biggleswade Hospital, because they needed to negotiate the property side with NHS before they can go ahead with the health and social care hub. We do have a joint committee meeting on Thursday and councillor Foster is the chairman of that. And I know that we can raise that issue with colleagues from central beds yet again. But it does come up on our agenda regularly. The other issue, you see, so we should have a site there where we could have extra GPs. We'd also have extra medical services, like clinics coming out from the hospitals and that. The other issue, of course, is a national issue, because there just aren't enough GPs. I shouldn't really speak for our MP, but I've had various conversations with him. And he is very anxious to see that the NHS is looked at properly and that there are better structures in place and that it's better managed. I think everybody knows that the frontline staff work wonderfully in hospitals and that, but there's an awful lot of bureaucracy and it's not terribly well managed. So I think people around the table will agree with all of that. And we will continue to do everything we can to raise the issues. And I think councillor Woodhead, you'd like to come in.
Thank you. And thank you very much for coming along this evening. It's actually very timely, because firstly, I think there are actually two issues here. They are linked, but they are slightly separate. Firstly, is the issue of COVID and the demand that that's put on healthcare locally. I think that's obviously an additional pressure which we can't underestimate. And then secondly, there's the issue around growth and the growth in the area and all the rest of it, which others may wish to comment on. I've been talking to councillor colleagues today and also been in contact with the town clerk. And one of the things we want to do in the next few weeks, months, ideally weeks rather than months, is to invite the practice managers of Iver Medical Centre and Safron Medical Centre to a town council meeting to ask them particularly what their plans are around COVID specifically and opening up and getting open to the public. Because I have not met one single resident who is happy with the way this has all been handled. And it seems that there is, there are different patterns around the country. So I don't think it's purely about COVID. I think it's the way they're choosing to run their surgeries. So I think there's an administration problem. That's not a medical point around treatment. This is about the way the practice is run, which is a very different matter. So we need to get to the bottom of that as a local, for local residents, because we're all paying into the system. Nobody's getting value for money from it or getting any accountability. So we need them to come along, at least talk to us, and we can work with them and raise issues on their health, whatever it might be. So I think particularly on the COVID issue, that is very, very pressing. As part of my research on that, people will be maybe surprised to know that I think there are 14,000 people on the books at Iver Medical Centre, it said. So I don't know how many are on at Safron, I couldn't quite tell. But I also think there's a broader issue here. And I can't prove it, we need to find out. But I don't think it's also just people in the town that are on the books of the medical centre. These people in the villages as well are also on. So there's actually additional pressures from outside. Because I'm not aware there are many of the medical centres around in the villages. There's one in Langford, but not so many other places. So I think there is a, you've hit the nail on the head today. And I really applaud you for coming to the council to talk about it. I'd already raised the issue specifically around COVID with the town clerk, actually today, to look at inviting them along. But there may be others that want to comment more about the growth issue. But you're absolutely right on the dental side of things. I think there are actually three surgery, dentist surgeries in Biggleswade. But there's only one I'm aware of that really takes NHS patients. And then the shutters come down and people having to go to Hitchin and Bedford and all the rest of it to get dental treatment. So yeah, it's not a current acceptable state of affairs, I don't think. But others may wish to comment. But hopefully we can get the practice managers or the lead GPs of at least those two surgeries to come in the next few weeks and talk to us about what their plans are.
Thank you very much for that. I wasn't aware of that meeting. But I certainly think we need the senior partners as well as the practice managers if they're going to come and talk to us. Councillor Fage.
I was just going to make, thank you ever so much for coming. Just one very brief point on growth. So Bigglesway Town Council has a very clear position on development. We don't support it to the north of the town. But if we are to support it, it has to go to the east. And that is absolutely entirely contingent on there being sufficient infrastructure. And that includes a GP provision. And the struggle that I think Central Bedfordshire has is as the planning authority, they have a certain amount of control over, let's say, roads, because they're also the highways authority. But whenever they have to try to improve other infrastructure, say the railway station, they have to deal with Network Rail. And when it's GP surgeries, they have to deal with NHS England. So I think if you can get a slightly more joined up approach there, that will be to the betterment of our residents. But clearly, the position of this council is unequivocal and has been very consistent since very early 2018, that if there's more development, the infrastructure has to come with it.
Councillor Strong.
Thank you. I think the point is very well made. But I think there's another issue that is very serious. Is it doesn't matter how many surgeries we have, if the doctors aren't there to actually service them, we could have all the wonderful buildings in the world, but we're no better off. And I think the shortage of doctors and nurses in this country at the moment is a major issue. And something has got to be done to address that. We can have all the beautiful buildings in the world. And it's no good if we haven't got the people to service them. So I think we need to bear that in mind.
It's a point well made. And I know from personal experience, which I won't bore the council with. But the universities are able to train more doctors, but the NHS will not provide the practical experience they need to be able to go forward and qualify. And that's one of the reasons why the NHS needs to be sorted out. Because when you've got universities saying we can provide more spaces for medical students and we can take them through our side of things, but they can't become doctors without the practical experience on the wards. And that somehow can't be provided when we're screaming for doctors and importing doctors from overseas, which is not necessarily a good thing for the countries they come from. You know, I think it really is a case of pushing all the way nationally for the NHS to be shaken up. So thank you for raising that. That's been a good debate, I think. Thank you, Mr Reynolds. Okay, colleagues, we don't have any exempt items, so I'm happy to declare the meeting closed. Having done that, can I just?